Can I have six o'clock, I'd like to welcome everybody called meeting to order. You would please stand for the pleasure and education of the court.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, it's again the end of the day. We're so thankful, Lord, that you let us live for this day. Your Father, we ask that you be with us tonight, and anything done in this league be according to thy will. Forgive us all many sins and shortcomings. We only pray in thy name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Second item is reading and approval of last meeting minutes. Have a move in second to approve the minutes from the last meeting, any discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. The third item is old business, which we had none. The fourth item of business, or is new business, and we have three items tonight, is that correct?
One of them has been withdrawn.
Which one?
The first one, Frank and Deborah McDaniel.
Okay, that one's gone. Alright, thank you, Rodney. Alright, so the first item will be a rezone request, RZ-10-18-1254. I'd like to now say we're gonna open up for a public hearing for this rezone request, and I'll ask Rodney what the county's recommendation is, please.
Sir, we, after doing the study on it, the compatibility with adjacent uses of districts are zoned rural residential and agricultural, and are compatible. The property value may have reasonable economic use. Suitability, the proposed land use intensity district is suitable for this property. Vacancy in marketing, that information is not available. The applicant has expressed a need for this type of service for Pickens County. The proposal may not result in a use causing an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets or utilities, and it is consistent with comprehensive plan, and it is districted for that as well.
Is Stacy Bagwell here?
I'm David Walker, I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Bagwell. Mr. Bagwell actually got hung up in graphic, and he's on his way. He was at Worley Crossroads when I talked to him about five minutes ago. But it's why Kristi's here, and this is a project that's near and dear to her heart, so she'll certainly be involved in it.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I will briefly, and for me, I thought it would be helpful to provide a little bit of additional information about what this facility was gonna be, if you don't mind us saying it over here.
Absolutely.
As you can see, they've had some drawings already commenced. This is some property Mr. Bagwell has owned for quite some time. They own Cuckin Rock Highway. This is the facility they anticipate using for not just weddings, I know right now that's a popular feature, this outdoor style wedding. They're certainly wanting to do that, but they also see it as being an event center for corporate events, family events, art shows, community shows, things of that nature, where you need a large facility with punishment, parking, et cetera. I know one of the things that they wanted to correct was in the initial application, I believe they said it was the hours would be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They would like to correct that, so it would just be till 10:00 p.m. After looking at what other facilities in the community are doing, we see that most of their hours are 10:00 p.m., and so the objective was staying line with what the community had already approved. So to that extent, that would be a revision that they would suggest on their own, in terms of limiting those hours of operation. One of the things that they're also gonna do, because they own the facility, and they all have a shared interest in making sure that these are responsible events that are going on, is they limit it 25 years for anybody who wants to rent the facility. The idea being that if somebody's getting married and they want to use it for a wedding, and they might be under 25, they'll certainly have family, parents, et cetera, that can sign for it. But what we don't want to do is have college parties, things of that nature, where you have people that are maybe not old enough to act responsibly. And again, their shared interest is, they want to protect their facility, and they have an interest in that, certainly. And this is Mr. Bagwell, by the way, who was able to show up and join us. So, and that's another revision. You can see on this aerial, oh pardon. This is a large parcel, and it's fairly secluded, so the actual facility itself will be in this pastured area right here. There's a pond down here, and there's already, you can tell by looking at aerial, there's already a rough cut, log road, something of that nature. They're gonna clean that up so that you can access, certainly not gonna clear or cut or anything of that nature. The idea simply being that you could get down to that pond if you wanted to be able to use it, because it's a pretty piece of property. On this side, you see for the most part, the area's surrounded by trees. They're gonna come in with some additional evergreens to these neighbors to the south. They've already spoken with them, to my knowledge, there's been no objection from the neighbors to the south. But nonetheless, the idea would be that along this fence line, we just come in with some evergreens and dress that up as well. At this time, if there's any questions from the board, I would certainly be happy to hear those and try and address them.
How far away from the neighboring property line is the building on the set?
I don't have an exact measurement, but seeing that this entire parcel is 31 acres, and the location will be approximately here in the middle, it's a pretty meaningful distance from both sides. It's gonna be equal distance, basically equal distance from both sides.
I wonder how far that is across there. Would you say 200 feet, 300 feet?
So I was trying to see if I had a scale. Stacy, can you know how about how far it is from one property line to the other there?
The road frontage on that piece of property is about, I wanted, it was either 510 or 400.
Okay. So you can see this widens out a little bit, so we would say approximately 500 feet.
What's the square footage of the building that planted the building?
The square footage of the building is about 6,500.
That's right. See, I want to interrupt you, say, we're a little confused there. We're talking about the rezone request for rural residential to agriculture. I think you jumped to the conditional use, which is the third item on the agenda.
Okay, well, I apologize, they kind of, they live together in our world.
I understand. So we're gonna step back, go back to item two, which is the rural residential to agriculture rezone request, as opposed to the conditional use. We'll get to that here in a moment. So, is there anything you'd like to address on the rezoning from rural residential to agriculture?
I wouldn't have anything to add to that, other than it was at one time agriculture. Mr. Bagwell, several years ago, took it to rural residential, so he would just be taking it back to where it was. And as was said earlier, that's in keeping with the general makeup of this area and the use plan.
Is there anything that y'all would like to add, Mr. and Mrs. Bagwell?
You know, I don't think it's gonna hurt the community. We're hoping to do some stuff this time of year where there's not a whole lot of ways that...
Let me interrupt you, please. We're talking about the rezone request from rural residential to agriculture, not the special events venue, because you've got two, you've got two separate requests here. We're dealing with rural residential to agriculture, which is the second item on the agenda. The third one will be the conditional use, which is the special events venue. That'll be the third, or the next item, so we'll...
That one might be the...
Okay. Any questions y'all would like to ask regarding the rezone request? If not, we have some people that would like to speak regarding agenda item number two. First would be Jane and Michael Burns, is that right, Burns? If you would please state your name and address and...
Jane Burns, 3539 Cuckin Rock Road.
What would you like to, again, this be directed to the board, not to the...
My concern is, why is the zoning going from residential to agricultural instead of possibly commercial? What makes it agricultural?
Because currently, the Pickens County zoning ordinance does not have a mechanism to where you can do it under a commercial setting. That is one of the things that the board and I have discussed about upgrading the code of ordinances to try to include something to address this type of issue, but currently there's nothing in there, other than going to an agricultural and then following that up with a conditional use.
Well, one of my questions is, the building across the street from us is commercial, I was told, and so there is commercial property out there. So how does that get zoned commercial if there's no way to do that?
When does that...
He's not talking about zoning commercial. To have this special events venue, Rodney, please correct me if I'm wrong...
It doesn't fall into that category?
It doesn't fall into commercial, it would have to fall into agriculture, because the way our local ordinances are adopted as of right now, which is one thing that we will be working on first year. So right now, this is the only method, or zoning, that if somebody does want to have a special events venue, it has to fall under agriculture. And the reason, I mean, the reason the other properties are commercial, when, I don't know when they were zoned commercial, when ever, maybe back in '05, when it was open to whatever you wanted to pick, if you're, with the county adopting zoning, if you were property on it, then you were free to have it zoned whatever.
My turn now.
Alright, I mean, are you good? Okay. Is it Katie Knox?
That would be me. Yes, sir. So, in other parts of the world, you can use rural residential for bed and breakfast as a subgenre. The thing with agriculture is that agriculture opens the door for chicken farms, for hog farms, for people to run cattle, to have an adverse effect on our property value. In and of itself, an event center, that's a whole different ball of wax, but just changing the zoning of the property around us could negatively affect our property values extremely. Because in the event that this doesn't work, and somebody comes along and says, hey, I'm gonna put a chicken farm there, what's to stop them, if it's zoned agriculture? Instead of taking it and saying, this is rural residential with an addendum, saying that you can have this sort of event center slash bed and breakfast type deal, that would protect the surrounding properties. Because I can assure you, it took me two and a half years to find a piece of property that I would buy because of chicken farms. And while there is one sort of bordering, kind of, a mile away, it's not right next door, and most of those are moving towards a different direction, but I do not want to see the opportunity there for a chicken farm to be next door.
Are you paying up your pay?
Twenty, thanks, but we'll just start with that.
You've got several minutes, so...
Well, I'm just saying that in the event that you are going to change zoning, please pay attention to the adverse effects that it could have to the surrounding properties and their values. Because property is the biggest investment that anybody can make, and it's unfortunate for our property values to be subject to the whims, the whims of the wind, really, but change in the zoning would really adversely affect that.
Mr. Tabb?
Actually, I circled number two in error, I should've circled number three, but Katie expressed my concerns, I mean, you don't need to hear it twice, I don't think.
You've got the...
That's up to you. You've got the four, she covered the issues I would have.
I should've circled three too, I should've circled two and three.
I want to address the third one.
Okay, well, do you want to wait till we get around to her?
Well, considering he circled for three as well, basically.
So Rodney, what are the, their concerns about chicken farms and that sort of thing? What are the issues there relative to the size of this property, relative to...
Currently, other ordinances in our code of ordinances, you have to have 550 foot, I believe it is, setback for chicken houses if they were to go in. She is correct, they are correct, in the agricultural setting, you could have chicken houses, you could have other types of animal yards. In the current zoning setting, they could split it up into about 25, 30 lots, and put double wide mobile homes on them. So I mean, unfortunately, you've got, you pick and choose.
The mobile home situation is under rural residential, not the agricultural?
Yes, well, that's what this property is currently zoned as, rural residential.
The two adjacent properties are already zoned agricultural?
Yes.
Yeah, here's, I assume these are chicken houses right down here?
Yes, sir. And there's also some others in the other direction as well, I believe. There's some in the northeast and some in the southwest.
Mr. Bagwell, how long have you owned this property?
I'd say probably 15 years, somewhere in the 15, 16 years.
And you've just been enjoying its natural state?
Just been sitting there. My dad's hunted it for, you know, just deer hunted it, some of the kids from church has hunted on it, and that's by all of you.
So it's been in the family for a long time?
Yeah.
And it's not in your current plan to sell it to anybody else at this point?
No.
I'm sorry, but hasn't it been for sale for at least the last five years?
Yeah, given, given what the...
You address us, not one another, please.
Given the current values of land, it's not worth half what I gave for it 15 years ago, in Pickens County. So that's, you know. But yes, it has been for sale, as the young lady stated, but that's just been out there for sale. Real estate agent said, I knew, wanted to put it on the market, and I said, you know, hey, help yourself, but you're not gonna sell it, because it's not gonna bring money. It just won't bring it. And so my intent was just to keep it, and just keep it in the family, and my son is 14, so I guess it was just inherited.
So, Rodney, back to your original recommendation, you recommended, the staff recommends...
The staff recommends approval of this, based on the character of the property. Based on the character of the area surrounding it, and the general area in which it lies.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve, I hear a psychic.
I'll sit then.
We have a move in second to approve the recommended request, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any of four? Yes, Rodney?
If I could make one request, I'd like to request that a copy of the planning and development complete file, along with a copy of the video recording, be made a part of the record, please, sir.
Motion voted on and passed, that closes that hearing. Item C, we'll have another, open up another public hearing for item C on the agenda, again, for conditional use request. I'd like to ask Rodney what the county's recommendation is for the conditional use.
Yes, sir, the basic parameters are all the same. The county offers, or the staff recommends approval for the conditional use permit.
Alright, now, turn it over to Bagwell, if they would like to...
Well, I'll be relatively brief, because I stole most of my own thunder, I remember too, and I thought I was something else. Just to speak to one of the issues, and just to reiterate, you know, they're only moving it towards agriculture, because there was no other way to allow this conditional use for the events area. So it's no, I mean, Mr. Bagwell indicated what he paid for this property, he has no intention of putting it to any affaring use in the way of agriculture in the sense of farming, et cetera. That being said, this particular use, and it was correctly noted that, you know, as it was before, you could've put 30 houses on it, in terms of one acre parcels, depending on the topography, of course, but that would've been a pretty substantial drain in terms of utilities and traffic, et cetera. One of the things that they're, again, proud of, Miss Bagwell has put a lot of time into planning, to talking to folks about this facility, and as you can see, this isn't a pole barn, it's just gonna be thrown up with some metal over it. This is gonna be a pretty expensive investment for this family, and that's why it's so important to them to do it right. They've already talked with a few third-party contractors, who will handle a lot of the actual event oversight, the catering, things of that nature. They will be operating in terms of ownership of the facility, maintenance of the facility, including requisite compliance with the, with their own policies, some of those I spoke to before, requiring an age limit on who can actually rent the facility, force enforcing the hours of the facility's use, and things of that nature. And just looking in the community, looking in the, what people are enjoying now, what people are using. You have a situation where a lot of people enjoy the outdoors, and want to take advantage of it, but they still want the protection of a roof. And so this allows sort of that combination for these types of events, and they're excited about the opportunity. Any questions?
How close is the nearest house to where this building is gonna be?
The nearest house, well, we have estimated, based on the road frontage, of being somewhere between 410 and 510. And when we back up a little bit, and you can see that the property lines expand, it's hard to say. I've got a tighter, more zoomed-in area over here, that I can visualize. Maybe this will help us, in terms of the houses. And I'm not sure where, um...
You might need to turn that...
So there is a house, I believe it's a mobile home on the south side, and Mr. and Mrs. Bagwell has spoken, so that's right here. Mr. and Mrs. Bagwell have spoken to these people, and they didn't have any opposition to the plan, I don't, nobody's here tonight from there. And then, this is the property line, the nearest house is back here. So the facility will be in this area, here. Now, this is a storage building, correct? An old chicken house is being converted to a storage barn, it's not actually in production with chickens anymore.
It's a shop.
It's a shop?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's a shop. And, and again, the house up here, so approximating, if this is somewhere between 410 and 510, it would be a meaningful additional distance, the distance to the surrounding houses.
How is the access off of the main road into there gonna be?
It will come in here. You can kind of see, this is a, this is the existing access right now, just third access, but along this tree line, is that right? And then curving, the access will come here and then curve up.
Yeah.
So as you can see, that'll maintain this buffer, this is pretty naturally buffered. They're gonna add some evergreens along this southern property line, to create additional buffer there.
Mr. Bagwell, what's the investment in that barn, that pole barn you're gonna erect? What's it gonna cost?
I'm sorry, he just got here in AIDS, and he's having trouble hearing.
I'd say investment in the barn is probably, I'm gonna say probably 300, 325,000 dollars is what I'll have in at the end of the day. It's not a, it's not a average barn.
Other questions?
I got a question about whether it's needed or not. We've already got 10 or 12 of these things in the county, haven't we?
About four or five that I can think of off the top of my head.
Well, we issued beer license, brick and floor license, two more. We do one right up the road from where they're at. So, if I was gonna invest that kind of money, I'd do some checking, I think.
Any other questions? Okay, we have Ms. Knox?
Yes, sir. I have quite a few questions for all of the involved. One, has land been parked yet, so that we know that the building can actually go where they want it to go?
Rodney, do you have any?
I have no idea on that.
Because parking the land makes a big difference. Because you might want it to go in that field, but that field's a ridge line, and so whether or not it can go there is a question. Where's parking gonna go? Are they going to fence the entire property to prevent wayward drunken individuals from wandering? I've been in plenty of weddings, I know what happens. Been in a few too. So what are you gonna do to protect the surrounding properties? I have animals, the people that they allow to hunt on that property now, unfortunately, have their deer stand pointed right at my horses, which is a problem in and of itself, but then if you're gonna have a bunch of strangers wandering around that are drunk, what's to stop them from wandering right across the easement to go pet a pretty puppy? Okay? It's that, my horses are elite athletes, they're not backyard pets, so that's a very valid concern for me. What are they gonna do to prevent noise violation? What are they going to do to prevent noise violations? The gentleman that lives in Westbrook's house, I'm surprised Westbrook isn't actually here tonight, he's real, he's the gentleman who uses the shop that used to be a chicken house. He's real sensitive to sound. He's calling my dogs for protecting my horses from coyotes. So, I can't even let my dogs protect my horses from coyotes without him calling and being threatened to have them taken away. But he's going to be okay with partygoers until ten o'clock at night? Because the noise ordinance is past nine P.M., the dogs have to be inside? That's just two dogs protecting against coyotes. And now you're going to talk about an events center full of people and cars coming in and out, and loud music, and drunk, I mean, I'm all, I'm all for having a good time. I'm not saying otherwise, but that's just one individual, never mind all the surrounding houses. From where they're talking about the access coming in runs right up that property line, right past my property, but current access that they have been using is by, and Westbrook's easement, along with Williams that live in the back. I have a letter that they mail, emailed to y'all, I have a copy of it, I'm surprised that that hasn't been brought into, into this discussion.
Kathy and Lee Williams?
Mm-hmm. They have some pretty severe concerns as well, because, again, and a lot of it goes back to whether or not the land's been parked, because just because you want it to go somewhere doesn't mean that you can build it there.
That's part of the building permit process.
That's right. Yes, they have to go to the health department before we can even issue a building permit, so.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
The next step, but, but still very valid, because where it, where it can be built versus where you want it to build is not the same thing. Having been in the, in the construction industry as Fred, we're familiar with these things. And so it might end up being that it gets pushed closer to a property line, or you have to move an awful lot of, a lot of dirt, because that property does this. It just... So, my question is, what, what are you going to have in place to protect against some of these things? What do you, or is, is the property going to be fully fenced to prevent people from wandering? What are you going to do about noise and traffic? Because I get that it's going to be open until ten P.M. in and of itself, but, okay, fine, not really so much of an issue, but it is to several of the neighbors, not everybody's a night owl. And aesthetic value, and traffic, you can't say that there's not going to be traffic, although it's, it's Highway five with traffic.
Mr. Bagwell, is there anything you'd like to add?
May I ask a question as opposed to making the statement?
Yes, you can, yeah.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, what constitutes a special event venue? What, this, sounds like a pretty broad term.
It is, it is a fairly broad term. I mean, we've had everything from tree houses to similar venues of this year, to renovated houses to...
Open air at Kinsberg?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I want anything that...
Okay.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I had in my head, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes, no, you're right.
So, if, if the wedding venue goes south, what's, what's to stop anybody, Mr. Bagwell or anybody else, from going from a wedding venue to a concert venue? Is there any measure, when you make a request for a special events venue, do you as a planning, zoning board, put stipulations? Or is it just, it's either yes or no, a special events venue?
We, we have put, or I guess limitations on their requests and all that, now, a lot of things like, for instance, a concert venue, county does have a noise ordinance, okay? So, that would fall really under the sheriff's office far as complaints, you know, somebody's having a, another woodstop concert in the Jasper door, and it's one o'clock in the morning on a sunny morning, you know, that, that would fall under, you know, the nuisance ordinance or noise ordinance there. So a lot of that is already being covered, but, you know, to your point, if they wanted to have a small outdoor concert, it's all nine fifty-nine, you know, I, I'm assuming they could, as long as it...
Is that the time limit, ten o'clock? I'm ignorant, I don't know.
Ten o'clock's what they, what they stipulated here.
Okay. In the paper last Wednesday, in the editorial page, there was a little verb about the county commissioners, ah, not having any set guidelines for special event venues, and the need for the guidelines. That, is, is that beyond your purview here? Is that strictly the county commissioners, or...
They would have a final say on it. You know, we've been asking for two years, I guess, two and a half years, for a while, on giving us guidelines, templates, something to go by. And fortunately, Rodney, in the last, since he's been involved as, as the interim director of planning and development, he's jumped on board and he's started getting the ball rolling and getting us a guideline to go over and discuss and have, I guess, next month's meeting, that will, if we approve it, it'll go before the board of commissioners for final approval. But, I mean, to, to what, that was essentially accurate what, what you were referring to. So that's the reason we've been struggling for several...
Well, no doubt in my mind, no doubt. But is it prudent to approve it carte blanche with no guidelines? I mean, I, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I mean, Harold said that there's twelve, I didn't realize there was that many, but...
There's somewhere around that.
There's, probably that was, that's, they had been approved or made, followed in, and I don't know how many in the last couple of years, Fred, that has come before us.
Well, I know down there at the corner of any of Church Road and Talking Rock Road, there's guys building one, that the Talking Rock Realty, Joel sold up, sold that property to a guy that's, that's his, he told me that was exactly what he planned to do, and I saw trusses sitting out there this week, this last week.
On a special events venue?
A wedding, it's just a wedding venue. And, I mean, I'm, there's no doubt in my mind, the Mr. and Ms. Bagwell intend to do that initially, but I'm not investing three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in that goes out, and I'll try something else. I'm doing something else. For that very reason, I'm opposed to it, if, if that matters at all.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, sir.
Thank you for coming on. Any other questions or comments in the board?
I have a comment, I just do not think these are appropriate for agricultural land. The thing that I can find that crosses was commercial recreational facility and retreat centers, and that was, they're permitted highway business and, and other things, and I don't know why, this is, this is a business, this is not an agricultural...
It's not agricultural.
It just isn't.
It's not agricultural.
No, it's not, this has nothing to do with agriculture, and I don't think it's applicable for agricultural land. It's my personal opinion.
Any other question?
I would, there are a lot of houses that are around this, and I personally would not want to hear noise up until ten o'clock, and no one enforces it. Look at this, I can see there's a lot of lots around there. But, that, that's my main...
Mr. Bagwell, may I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
If, if, if this gets approved, because my land borders his land inland, on the west, southwest side, using the logic that you guys used to rezonate agriculture, and personally, I really don't care that it's some agriculture, but using that logic, I can get a special events venue permit, or, or, what do you call it?
Conditional.
Yeah, conditional permit for a special events venue strictly because my land borders his land and he's got one. Is, is that following the logic?
If, if you're in agriculture...
Actually, I'm a rural residential, I believe, but there's agriculture all around. I don't see how you could deny me agriculture.
Well, you're, you're, well, you know, if you meet the qualifications, then it'd be the same process that Bagwell's are going through right now.
Then it'd be the same logic, though, since there's a special events venue there, barring my land that's on agriculture, I can get a special events permit?
This is possible.
Then, more than possible, maybe probable?
Well, I mean, over the last two or three years, I'd say we're fifty-fifty. Half of them have passed, half of them have not. And I may not be exactly, I'm just...
Yeah.
...but it's, it's pretty close to fifty-fifty.
But if I come up with a compelling argument, I'd probably be successful.
There, I mean, there's a chance. I mean, the reason we voted for it some and against some is one done manner out in hint a couple of years ago, no one was here in opposition to this one, and there was not a single person in opposition to it. Of course, there wasn't really no, no houses nearby that property either, but up near Long Swamp Church, a few months ago, there was a little B and B type thing that was passed. The other one at Philadelphia Church, right there on Philadelphia Road, it was similar to this here, their driveway, I mean, adjoined, I mean, it touched the parking lot of Philadelphia Church, we turned it down because, you know, it was a church and...
The church was there a while.
About a hundred and seventy-something years ago. But, so anyhow, I mean, like I said, you know, we've, we take one case by case, one request at a time, and try to balance it out and make the fairest of decisions.
Right. Well, I don't envy your job, but thank you for your service.
Sometimes it's, it's, it's not, it's not as easy as what, you know, I appreciate you saying that, but I mean, you've been building a long time, you, I'm sure you've had to go through some of this, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I have.
May I say something?
Oh, yes, Mr. Bagwell.
This piece of property, you know, I've not monitored it, but there's been four-wheelers riding on it. There's been horses riding on it.
Without permission.
Without permission. So to say, am I going to put fences up to keep my people in, maybe I should put fences to keep the other people out.
Exactly.
Sometimes fences make good neighbors, so.
And we've never had a hunting accident, never once.
Yeah.
Has there been anything happen there that put anybody in harm?
And the boys that hunt on it, I, I know, I've known them since they were kids, and they're well-behaved kids. They've become great men, they hunt with bows mostly.
And we've told them to respect the other people's land, because we want to be good neighbors.
They even went and said to the people that's riding four-wheeling on it, even though they're drinking over there, about half drunk, you know, maybe shouldn't be, I would confront them, you know, and said, hey, do you have permission to be riding over here? No. Well, I probably wouldn't come back over here, you know, but the horse trails that goes through there, you know, I, I've rode horses for you, but I respect your other people's...
Other people's property.
Enough that I can get on there. So, fences, sure, if I need to put fences up to keep the horses out, I can do that too.
And the comment I was going to make, I was supposed to make earlier, was in fact, yes, there will be fencing on these borders, for all the reasons that have been discussed, but yeah, that's part of the large plan, not only to have the evergreen buffer, but also to have solid fencing along those property lines. And Ms. Bagwell spoke with Mr. Westbrook, I know he's not here today, she spoke with him, told him exactly what the plan was, and...
Shirley was all for it. Sure, I know Perron and Shirley, and they were all for it. We've actually spoke to the man that lives in the house there, and he was excited about it. So I, I'm not sure if somebody's telling us something different, or we respectfully tried to, you know, we didn't have time to go to everybody because we work, but we want to be good neighbors, we want to help the community.
The closest, the two closest houses there, we've spoken to.
And they've agreed to it. I, I want to do it, I don't want to, where I live, but I wouldn't want to hear, you know, stuff, you know, I want to be, I want to respect them and I want them to respect us. We've worked hard, we paid for this land, you know, we was not giving this land by our parents, we worked hard and sweated for it and paid for it, and I think it would help the look of the area. Well, we're not going to put some commercial building up, it's going to be a nice country setting. I've got a company, I've spoke to a company that's going to, you know, work with this, it's not going to be a drunken brawl. I'm not like that, I don't drink, we do not drink. It's not going to be just a throw-down party, I don't like that, I'm not going to have that. I wanted to actually, I believe in giving back, I've got a fourteen-year-old son, I wanted to, come Christmas time, if I actually got to do the event center, I wanted to try to go to some of the schools here and search for maybe some kids that didn't have anything at Christmas, and bring in Santa Claus, and Stacy and I put back money to buy maybe five or six families Christmas. And this is the truth, I mean, I, I want to show my son that you have to, you know, I believe the Lord gives you extra, you know, you, you pay that favor back and bring in some kids, this is not just a party facility. Yes, I do want to make money, I've got to make money, I've got to make a living, but I really want to, you know, go get some kids that maybe have no Christmas, and get with some of the schools and, and bring in Santa Claus and, and maybe give them a little Christmas, you know, do some community stuff too, it's, it's, you know, I, I do want this to be my living, I'm not trying to say that, but this is not a party facility. I mean, it's going to be control, a controlled environment, and I'm putting a lot of money into this, and, and I'm going to, you know, I want it to work, but I want everybody, I don't want people to hate us, I'm not about that, I, I want to be good neighbors. You know, this land's set up here forever, I want, I want to make it, you know, I want to make it successful, not going to put chicken houses on it, I don't want to raise chickens, I don't know anything about chickens, but, you know, I want it to be nice, and we've already put a lot of money into this, and, you know, I would like everybody to be, you know, enjoy it.
Y'all live near Pough?
We live in Dawson.
That's right, so...
Ms. Bagwell, it sounds like you obviously have thought a lot about this, so, Jimmy, tell us what research you've done.
Well, I've just, and I know there's, what the gentleman said, there, there is a facility on every corner, I understand that, but, you know, they're all booked, you know, and I, I think, I'm just really, I love to do landscaping, I love to do the architect, like drawing the barn out and, and coming up with our own ideas, I mean, it's, I want it to be a family thing. My son, he, he was, he's fourteen, and he restores John Deere tractors, and I want him to be able, you know, if they have a wedding, to carry people with his tractors, you know, from the parking lot to the barn, and, and let him get involved in this, and, you know, especially the Santa Claus, you know, letting, may, you know, just see how business works and, and how we work together as a family, you know, we only have one son, and we're all about doing stuff together, and I just feel like this is something that we can all enjoy and, and maybe make some money too. I'm not saying I don't want to make money, I've got to make a living, but I think this is just something we can enjoy as a family. We love farm life, we live out in the country now, like I say, my son has his tractors, and I just thought it would be a cool idea, you know, we, we've got a parking lot here, the barn's going to be on the back of the property, let my son, you know, take... You know, we, we got a parking lot here, the barn's gonna be on the back of the property. Let my son, you know, take people when they get out of their car in the back of his tractor with his trailer and, you know, just, just make it a family event. I'm not doing this to make anybody mad. I want to be a good neighbor. I want to, I mean, we're going to invest a lot of money in the, in the landscaping and I think it would end, if you saw the property, I think it would improve. I mean, there's broken fences, the trailer at the back, it don't even look livable. I mean, and that's seems to be from where some of the problems that we've had over the years stimulates from. I mean, I don't know who they are, but I know they've given us a lot of problems on our property.
Can I say something briefly? I'm sorry. Oh, I think the event center and the schematics and the drawings of this is beautiful in and of itself. I think it's a beautiful rendition of what could be. Where on the property it goes makes a huge difference. The backside of that property, way back in the corner, you can have beautiful woodland trails back there where you can go by the pond where you're back there nestled in the woods and like a little, like, romantic woodland venue. In and of itself would be beautiful, but if you have it up front where everybody's houses are, or you do have unfortunately drunken people on four-wheelers that decapitate themselves and general traffic, then it's going to be unrelated to everybody that, around it. If, if it goes on that cleared bridge line, backside of the property is a completely different story in my mind. Because if it's back there in that back northwest corner, it's not near our house. Nobody's going here.
Well.
Well, you all, y'all are-
Our property touches that.
Yeah, which way, which way is that from?
That's acres and acres from everybody involved then.
Well, we're only on two, three, six acres.
I mean, and even me and Kathy Williams, they got their one little acre and my property wraps behind theirs and yours wraps behind theirs. And then theirs wraps behind it. They, even they who are trying to be as insulated as possible, that's why they just bought a house and sold their lake house, would be insulated from it. It, it's not that the venue in and of itself isn't beautiful and it's not that the concept of being able to give back to the community isn't beautiful. It's how, when, where that is more of an issue, at least for me.
Where's your house adjacent to the property?
Oh, right next to Westbrook's. By the other yellow house.
Were you alone in that place?
No, that's the car.
Do we need to-
I'll be happy to talk to you.
Y'all can talk that after.
I mean, could you point it out over there?
Oh, yeah. Unfortunately, this is an old schematic exchange.
We're not, yeah, again, this is between us and-
They use it that they use to have access to it currently. My wife from Westbrook is my driveway.
Do I hear, will you share your brief?
Uh, Mr. Bagwell, are you willing to possibly consider, um, replacement in a way that might address, I'm not asking you to commit to it today, but are you willing to consider ultimately where you place the building?
Well, we want the building on our backside. I mean, you, you can't have a wedding venue right up next to those houses. And not that I'm being rude, but it's, you can't, nobody's gonna, who's gonna get married when you have, it's just not feasible. It's back next to that. It's in the back where the narrow spot is, you know.
Would you mind pointing it out?
Can you join me in this?
Very housework.
Because I want it to be a wood set, natural.
Because what I understood was in that little clearing section.
All right, so we're saying somewhere along in this area.
But as far back as you can go.
Right in here. And this would be the open air venue back here. The pond is going to get bigger. I want it to get bigger. This is Harold Westbrook's and this is, uh, his sister's old house right here.
That's the Williams over there.
Okay, and you're here.
No.
That's you? Yeah, there's a cliff right there.
Yeah.
Bring that back to the office where he's at.
Over here. Nobody?
No, that's us.
That's you?
Yeah.
So I'm up in here.
Like, wouldn't the wedding venue be back here? That's where I want it to go.
Yeah.
Like, kind of like, right here. Like, nothing would be happening on this side because there's a cliff. I want it nestled, you know how you kind of look down that, I call it a valley, it's really not, but I want it kind of nestled back in there. Just to give it a natural setting, not up by the Westbrook, Harold's home place, not up there.
Well, where we, um, I guess where we were confused is we thought it was in that bear area there.
Yeah. In the barren areas.
That's where the building is going to be? Yeah, center back.
So it's, it's not going to be where the tree line is in that little clear spot there?
No, it's going to be the back lot in the corner.
Back corner.
That's the building that's going to be back there.
The barn.
Yes, the barn is going to be in that back, it's like a, it's like a valley, a little opening and all that set, the setting back in the woods.
I guess a part of the computer, it's just, one of the drawings that comprise seems to imply that it was up in the front.
I guess nowhere near the front because I, you know, I want it to be natural. I don't think anybody's going to get married if they're going to look at a bunch of houses and homes. Nobody's going to want that.
So you want to say, all right, show them to grow the road.
Yeah, show them.
Yeah, turn it back here.
With my understanding that you just said that the natural one would be back here. You said the other one would be here. What do you want to point it out?
So this drawing, I'm, I'm assuming is not accurate with here, you're saying it's going to be back here.
The open area up there is the pasture. That's what you're looking at. The open area.
Yeah.
So she's saying just behind the open area is what she's talking about. Or the back.
Now, is that for the open air at the back? Because your drawing shows the building itself up front.
Show us, show, show them right here.
They're gonna have a pavilion and a barn? Is that, is that what the plan said? Because this is just showing, it'd be a barn, but not a pavilion as well.
The pavilion, no. We've had the barn. I like having open venue at the pond. If money allows. Does it allow right now?
You get the pond. So the pond is, I'm assuming somewhere like that here. The pond's right here. What's the open air venue? The open air venue should be right now. Yeah.
And the pole barn is still there.
And this is actually, you'll, you'll cross the meadow right here into the woods and this thing is going to be right in here.
The barn?
Yeah.
Is that back in the back corner?
No, that's right here in the back corner.
You first of all, that's, or is it, yeah.
So what, what's the open area?
Well, that'll be later. I'll come later looking over the pond.
It'll be down at the pond.
Okay, so I'll be at the pond.
It's not even going to be.
As soon as I get the pond retrofitted.
Okay, so, all right, so the barn's going back here or just back in the pond?
Yes.
And then at some point in time in this future, near future, whatever.
It'll be down at the pond. Down at the pond.
So nothing is going to be up near the Highway five?
No, no, absolutely not. The parking lot's going to be?
I don't think so.
Parking lot, the parking lot's going to be in the pasture.
The parking lot's going to be up in here.
Yeah, that's, I'm assuming that's what that cleared off area there is the pasture.
That's the pasture, yeah.
So that's the parking lot. So all that activity will be back here.
Yes, yes.
Right. There's nothing back here.
Meanwhile, there's a cliff here.
Right.
This is where an old trelly is at the bottom.
Right.
You must get much trouble.
Right.
Thank you.
And then I'll retrofit the, the pond actually back there. I'm going to redo the dam and everything. And make it bigger. Is the plan.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that based on the revised drawing indicating the location of the primary venue where the, where the activities will primarily take place, that that draw indeed be part of the record. And that on that basis, I would recommend approval of the request.
We have a motion to recommend approval. Go here a second. Based on this very rough sketch here. One second. Got a move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion's denied.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask again that, uh, the copy of the planning and development filed along with a copy of the video be included into the case file, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Pardon? That closes that public hearing. Um, next item on the agenda is, board comments. Need board comments?
I think so, coming out. Thanks for having us.
Any other comments? The next item is public comments. Anything, anyone would like to comment on? Next item is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? They're, they're moving in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.